Welcome to the May third, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment for those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been held. My name is Eric Casino. I am this season's chair residing District Two. We'll start with introductions here in the boardroom and see if anybody came in online. Could we start down here with you, please?
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Derek Day, District One.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Helen Wheatley, District One.
Did we have any other commissioners show up online?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, I hope everybody had a chance to look over the agenda. I have a couple additions I'd like to make to it. The first one is, uh, we're gonna like to hear from Director Cummings today. We're gonna put him in uh, between at two point five and then we'll also add in at eight point five, a short report from the Chair of the Subcommittee Commissioner, Commissioner Pestinger. Um, if so, I would entertain a motion on the amended agenda.
So.
Second.
The amended agenda has been moved to second and I call for the vote.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley. Hi, Commissioner Pestinger. Commissioner Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Right.
Commissioner Casino.
I, the agenda is accepted. With that, I hope everybody had a chance to look over the, uh, meeting minutes from April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, if there's any discussion on it, I'd like to.
I don't know. Okay.
On page four, line two. Commissioner Pestinger asked about talk about the outreach plan. He is concerned the staff might not be good stewards of the money with printing and other communication strategies. He mentioned a postcard mailer being sent out regarding the shoreline master plan and states that postcards are a costly thing to utilize for outreach. Um, I certainly brought up concerns, but not at all about the staff not being good stewards of money. Uh, I, my concern was with messaging and that the commissioners in the shoreline master plan did not have a chance to review the messaging and approve it and they were frustrated that it didn't represent what they wanted. Um, so I feel like that comment was more about the overall prioritization spending and content of potential outreach.
Are, are you asking to have that second sentence stricken then?
Yeah.
There be any objections from the rest of the commission about having that sentence stricken from the minutes? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the.
Yeah, I wanna go on a comment yet.
Okay, to accept the, uh, meeting minutes of April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three and ex- and accept the audio as the official meeting records. Any discussion?
I'd like to see grammar corrected in it. And there's a lot of, you know, I got marks all over it.
All right.
I think our minutes ought to be grammatically correct, not have words stuck in that shouldn't be there or that kind of thing.
Do you need any corrections for this particular meetings tonight?
Well. I just think someone should proofread it.
Okay.
Or it's official official.
All right, well, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Passenger. Commissioner Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Right.
Commissioners Casino.
Uh, meetings from April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three have been accepted. Right, with that, we'll move on to item number two point three is a, uh, address from Director Cummings.
Hello, everyone. I am Joshua Cummings, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. I have some prepared remarks because I want to be precise in what I say, so bear with me as I look down at my notes here. First off, I want to express my deep appreciation to the Planning Commission. I recognize that your volunteers, that it's an evening and there's a lot of time that goes into reading and all of the materials that were presented to you. We appreciate all the reading that's done on the extent materials on land use and we appreciate you being prepared for the meetings and engaging in civil discourse on important topics for our community now into the future. This takes a good deal of time and it's appreciated by me and by the county leaders as well. So, thank you. During the last Planning Commission meeting, what I hope will be an isolated event going forward, a series of communications occurred that did not meet the standard of civil discourse. Going into detail on this topic will likely not be productive. The meeting can be viewed on the county YouTube if there is interest. For those of you who may be unclear as to the standards expected of you, please refer to the Board of County Commissioners Handbook for volunteers on boards and commissions, specifically the sections which state, treat individuals with fairness, impartiality and respect, and respectfully engage with staff. Please know, CPED staff has been guided to presume positive intent and to maintain professionalism. I believe in this unfortunate exchange, our team did just that while appropriately and respectfully standing their ground when necessary. For their professionalism, I am grateful and I am proud to be their director. Your time and input is valuable. The work you do is necessary for a functioning democracy. I believe we all have a shared goal of doing what is best for our community and I look forward to next steps and respectful dialogue. That's the prepared remarks. I do heartfelt appreciate all the time that you all put into the recommendations that are provided to the Board of County Commissioners. It has been heard that you'd like to have a meeting with the Board of County Commissioners that is on their schedule. We do look forward to receiving, the board does, an agenda and some items that you'd like to talk about specifically. It is important that we ensure the dialogue between the board and the Planning Commission continues to be positive and productive as well as with staff. Uh, and again, thank you for your time. Moving on, shifting gears, I'd like to take just a minute to express my appreciation to Chris Chapeau, our community planning manager. She served the county in a number of roles, including in development services as the compliance supervisor and then moving her way up through the ranks in community planning. She is a true professional in the planning profession, as it were, uh, and has engaged in many important topics to our community. She has been able to align the docket items in a way that they are now, now all assigned to staff and moving forward. And she was able to, with the help of many, uh, experts and non-experts, work forward to achieving a habitat conservation plan that will change the way that we protect the environment and allow for development in our county going forward for decades. Chris Chapeau has decided to depart Thurston County service. Her last day with the county will be May twelfth and we appreciate all of her hard work. I'm gonna clap. In the interim, Jeremy Davis, our operations manager, will be filling the role as interim community planning manager. He has decades of experience, probably wouldn't have liked me saying that. He has years of experience, uh, in long-range planning and what is very familiar with a number of the issues that the Planning Commission has been working on. So he'll fill that role until which time we find someone to fill the role of community planning manager. So, if any of you know anyone out in the community that is interested in facilitating difficult dialogues on land use, please send them my way. We're looking for professional folks that are committed to, committed to our community. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Director Cummings. All right, at this point, we'll open, uh, this up to item number three on our agenda, which is public communication. Um, I think that there was a sign-up sheet here and there should be some people that want to address the Planning Commission. And, uh, if you're here to comment on the public hearing that we're going to be holding at seven P M., if you will save your comments until that time, we'll have another public comment period just specific to that. If you're here to address the planning commission generally, uh, we'll, uh, take your comments now. Um, you'll have three minutes to address and after we finish up everybody here in the boardroom, we'll move online. First up would be Mr. John Pettit.
My name's John Pettit. I live out off Rich Road in East Olympia. And, um, uh, have to come, comment quick is that Mr. Cummings is very smooth. He really, he covered the topic pretty strong and and good. And yes, you know what? I'm one of the few people of the public who constantly attends meetings and, uh, all of you have taken and dedicated a lot of time to be here. So, I appreciate that. One of the issues which I did want to bring up because I think that one of the things that Thurston County is about is equity and fairness. And one of the things that we also care much about is our agricultural element of our, you know, county. Well, we have a program that's, uh, currently limited in scope to only a certain area. It's an agritourism, uh, overlay area and I would like to see that, uh, expanded, not just in the South County, throughout the entire county. I don't know any reason why it could not work within the unincorporated county areas. In my particular area, yes, my property would qualify, uh, which is out off Rich Road, if you happen to know where Deschutes River Ranch is. But Latins, Latin's a major mark in our community long-term. It is almost an exact element of what agritourism was meant to be. And I think that, uh, we want to encourage every time people take their kids there to Latins or go there, it's, it's supporting local community and it's bringing them closer to understanding what farming and agriculture is. So, uh, while you're processing many of your different topics and everything, going through the new comp plan and everything, I would just like to see that that be a recommendation that the county would seek to, uh, expand it. Uh, one provides, so I would say though, is anybody declaring themselves using as an agritourism designation needs to actually go through much like an open space designation, have an approval for that purpose that that's what you're gonna do. You don't get to walk the fence. I want to do it this way and then I want to do it that way. So, uh, whatever my time is up and everything, thank you again for all your service. And, uh, I realize you're highly paid and so hopefully they would bring you some cookies or something at least to benefit you in some way. Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the boardroom that I'd like to address the Planning Commission?
I would.
Please do. Please come up and I, yeah, tell us who you are and you have three minutes.
Okay. So I'm Marcy Cleaver. I'm with the Community Farmland Trust. I live out in the South Bay area and like the board, I am um, on the board of the Community Farmland Trust and I'm highly paid as well. So, um, I'm here tonight to, um, to thank the staff that put together a nearly two hundred-page long-term ag report of various suggestions of all the hearing sessions they did and a lot of, I'm sure, blood, sweat and tears in there because sometimes the audiences aren't as civil as we would like them to be. Um, but I think for the most part, it was pretty, pretty darn good. I also want to encourage, now that the report is here and it's nearly two hundred pages and can really be overwhelming, that the Planning Commission does take the time to look at every page, to read it, to understand what the meaning of it is because it's so important and it's so far-reaching and it's, the impact is gonna be huge. And as you go through that two hundred-page report, nearly two hundred pages, you'll see there's a great table in there that talks about the surrounding counties and how Thurston County stacks up to these other counties and farmland preservation and, and how, what, what they do and what we do. And we are definitely an outlier. We are not doing what our peers are doing and it's not a good place to be because that speaks to the future of not having that stable influence that can affect carbon input, uh, carbon footprint, uh, local food production, local jobs and the ripple effect of all those local jobs. And, and just having that surface that's not paved over, that water can go into the ground and recharge our wells because the majority of the water in this county is well water. And as climate change is coming and we're gonna get less rain, then we need to make sure we've got enough collection basins, collection areas for that water to go in. So as we get more and more homes moving out into the rural area, which should be about five percent of new homes and it's up like thirteen percent. There's more straws going into land that are sucking up all that water out there and there's people out there with water rights who are gonna be affected by that. So, I encourage you again, take your time, ask lots of questions. You've got a great staff to ask them. Ask for stakeholders input, all that good stuff because we're here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission? All right, we'll move on to, uh, Zoom. Please choose the raise your hand option to address the Planning Commission. You'll be promoted to panelists when it's your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. You're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose the star six to unmute yourself. A three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help you keep track of time. And I think that we do have, uh, one person up is that Sam Payne. Sam Payne, you have three minutes. You'll have to unmute Sam. Mr. Payne, you'll have to unmute yourself by. There you go.
Okay. All right, we get it to work now.
Okay.
Yes, I, I'm a member of the Agricultural Advisory Board, uh, uh, to Thurston County Planning, working with Ashley and Maya on that. And, uh, one of the things that I'm proposing to the Planning Commission is that, uh, any landowner that desires to be may, uh, register his land as farmland. Uh, specifically that goes to our funding, uh, uh, and also it goes to the management of that land in that a individual can carry forward with normal farming practices on his land. Now, of course, there would be consequences, uh, to registering as a farm, uh, affecting your future development rights. So I'm well aware of that. Uh, anyway, uh, we are very greatly concerned in the agricultural community is how we defeat a nation of three hundred and thirty million people. And given the facts of life that SNAP benefits have been reduced, uh, the, uh, some of the government funding, uh, food programs, uh, food banks, that sort of thing has been cut back. So we do have an issue with getting enough food to people in the community. So I do feel that we need to grow our own if at all possible. Uh, I, I think I can close with that and thank you for your time, Yellen.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the Zoom channel that would like to address the Planning Commission? I don't believe that there is. We'll move on to new business agenda, item number four, which is a work session on the minor amendment to the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight capital improvement plan with, uh, Andrew Vaughn and Maya Tople.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrew Vaughn here with Community Planning. Today's work session is on amendment to the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-eight capital improvement program. Included in this presentation is a motion to set a public hearing for May seventeenth. The capital improvement program, or known as Appendix G within the comprehensive plan, is a six-year outlook on all capital projects that need to take place within the county to meet the level of service needs. It is updated annually, like the comprehensive plan that's updated every ten years. It is consistent with the budget, but is not a budget and helps to identify revenue and project costs for each of the items listed within the C I P. It prioritizes and describes each of the projects so that there's a little more background than just a name on a list and helps determine when a project should occur and its development. So the proposed amendment to the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-eight C I P is the State Road, State Route five oh seven and Vale Road Southeast Roundabout. It is a proposed single-lane roundabout at the intersection of five oh seven and Vale Road Southeast. And as you all are very well aware, State Road five oh seven is a parallel track to I five and can at times be rather busy and it does connect from Centralia all the way up to Spanaway. And to meet the state's goal of target zero, which is reduce traffic deaths and injuries on state roads, the Washington State Legislature, uh, funded the, the Move Ahead Washington Transport Take Transportation Package, which allocated funds to address this intersection. Washington State, the primary organization that received those funds, doesn't have the capacity at this time to do it in a timely manner. And so they're coordinating with Thurston County Public Works for them to construct the, uh, roundabout and the funds will be transferred to us. And because the project requires, uh, for the county to work on a project, it must be included within the capital improvement program. And also with that, a budget amendment is required. And because the budget amendment, we are kind of pressed for time. And so we have requested from the board and they granted yesterday a waiver to the standard noticing practices that you typically see. And with this waiver, we are permitted to go under the standard twenty-day noticing period, but not to go less than ten days. And so what we intend to follow is legal notice, a web mailer and press release for issuance on May fifth, which will allow twelve days of noticing, uh, to meet the public noticing requirement for a public hearing with the board on May twenty-third. So there's a lot of moving pieces to get this complete. And that more or less kind of covers the proposed amendment. This, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, is the motion that we provided, uh, for setting a public hearing. We also are joined with the interim county engineer as well as other staff from Public Works to answer any specific questions that you might have related to the project. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Andrew. We got some questions here, Commissioner Pestinger.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Andrew. Uh, I didn't hear any public comment mentioned about this tonight, but are you aware of any public concern about the shortened timeframe?
We have not received any public comment at this time. There is also no comment during the board's, uh, meeting yesterday.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
That's the intersection just outside of Rainier, right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Right here by that church and intersection. Has Rainier been talked to about this project?
I will declare to Public Works. Matt, are you available to answer this question or Shannon?
Andrew, I'm here. Um, my name is Matt Osmond, interim county engineer. Um, this is just actually located just outside of the city of Yelm. It's right near the Pierce County border, um, near McKenna. Um, so this funding package actually includes three different roundabouts. One at Bald Hill Road, one at Vale Road and one at seven, seven oh two. Uh, the city of Yelm is going to take charge of the roundabout going in at Bald Hill Road. Thurston County is taking charge of the one at Vale Road and Pierce County is taking charge of the one at seven oh two.
So the twenty-one million is for all three?
That's correct, sir.
And it's gonna be, uh, split up to the city of Yelm and the county?
City of Yelm, Pierce County and Thurston County.
You know, yeah, how, how the distribution of those funds is gonna go?
Seven million, seven million, seven million.
Hmm, thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? I think it's important to note that, I mean, it is of the essence on this one. It's not often that we get basically free money for infrastructure projects from the state. So moving forward with this would be.
I'd like to make a motion, Chair.
That'd be fantastic.
I'd like to move to set a public hearing for May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M. or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard on the resolution to amend Appendix G of the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program to add the State Route five oh seven and Vale Road Southeast Roundabout Project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing for May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M. or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard on the resolution to amend Appendix G of the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program and add the State Route five oh seven and Vale Road Southeast Roundabout Project. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley. I, Commissioner Passenger.
Uh.
Commissioner Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
All right.
Commissioner Casino.
I, that motion carries and we have a public hearing set for May seventeenth at seven P M. Thank you very much. Right, well, we are real close to, um, seven o'clock here, but we do need to wait a few minutes, um, before we start that public hearing. So that way everybody is ready for it. Um, so in the meantime, why don't we jump ahead to item ten and go over our calendars real quick? And is there anybody here on May seventeenth where our tentative topics will be long-term agricultural zoning update and forced conversion code amendments? Does everybody think that they'll be able to make those particular, that meeting? Uh, I'm sure Pestinger will be up. On May twenty-second or May twenty-fifth, I think that, that has been settled now, which they, they were gonna be doing Yelm Joint Plan, correct? The twenty-second is the first one?
I.
Yes, that has been settled. It's on May twenty-second is the first joint work session.
So on May twenty-second, we are planning on having a, a joint plan work session with the city of Yelm. Uh, that's a Monday. Is everybody expecting to be able to make that?
Oh, it'll still be up.
You'll still be out. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pestinger.
That happened here.
Yeah, it's gonna be here at six o'clock?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. All right. How close to seven o'clock are we?
One step.
Well, let's do, um, let's do, uh, a staff update.
Sure. I have a few staff updates. I wanted to make the Planning Commission aware again that the S N P public hearing is May sixteenth at five P M. Um, there will be a briefing on the Olympia Joint Plan with the planning, or excuse me, with the Board of County Commissioners on the seventeenth of May. Um, and following that briefing, there will be a briefing on the Grand Mount, um, Subarea Plan and Land Use Designation, um, Amendments, um, at nine, yes, at nine thirty on the seventeenth as well. So there are a number of, um, items that you all have seen and heard coming through to the, the board. That's all I have.
All you have. All right. Um, okay, are we, are we at seven o'clock yet?
Three minutes.
We still have three minutes. Commissioner Pestinger, do you think three minutes is long enough to?
Yes.
Commissioner Pestinger is gonna give us a update on what the subcommittee has been doing.
So the subcommittee met twice, uh, we elected myself as Chair, uh, Ellen as Vice Chair and Erica as Secretary. And we discussed, we, uh, confirmed that we've, uh, from the meeting minutes of this previous meeting, that we're, our work, uh, order, our work tasking was to limit our efforts to recommendations related to the public participation and public engagement side of the comprehensive plan update. Um, so we went through, spent most of our time on a new House Bill eleven eighty-one, uh, that just passed. And was it a House or a Senate?
Oh, House.
House Bill, um, that has a lot of requirements for G M A and comp plans and it was pretty useful and insightful. So we have basically drafted, uh, a list of recommendations. Uh, we wanted to give this, uh, commission time to consider it and not present it all and ask for a decision today. So we are going to send it out to everyone in the next few days and then people have time to consider it before the next meeting and when we can.
We routed through staff to.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it. That's the report.
All right. Thank, do you have anything to add to it, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay. Was that three minutes?
Yes.
Great.
This is perfect.
Well, thank you very much for that. We're now gonna move on to our, uh, Terry Open Space Tax Program Application Public Hearing. Uh, today we're gonna hold this public hearing. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have appeared in person or have joined by Zoom, phone, emailed in comment or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, uh, for those in person, um, sign up and if you're on Zoom, we will call you out when that time comes. Uh, when we ask for a public comment, each person will have three minutes to testify. Uh, I'll call out the names for oral testimony and then, then Zoom testimony. When you're hearing names, please come forward. Uh, your time. Uh, your time may not be given to another person. And when testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. Staff, ask staff to review the timer, which will be, I guess probably will review the timer when it's time for that. So this public hearing is now open. We will start with staff presentations. And that's Marissa Wisman.
Good evening, commissioners. Marissa Wisman here with community planning. I'm here this evening to hold a public hearing on the Terry Open Space Tax Program application. An overview, the purpose of the open space tax program is to conserve open space lands, which the Open Space Taxation Act requires of county governments under RCW 8434. Tax reductions are granted if qualifying properties are maintained in an open space state. Yep, application and review this evening is for a property located on Spurgeon Creek Road Southeast, which is north of Rainier Road Southeast, south of Yelm Highway Southeast, and immediately north of Fox Ridge Lane Southeast and unincorporated Thurston County. The applicant proposes to enroll all of their 12.84 acres in open space under the significant wildlife habitat area category. And there are no residential structures or appurtenances to exclude. The applicant proposes to maintain their property as open space for fish and wildlife habitat and to protect water resources for the citizens of Thurston County. They will conduct invasive plant management as needed. The subject property contains over 900 feet of Spurgeon Creek, which is classified as a type F stream and is almost entirely covered with emergent wetland. It also lies within the McAllister geologically sensitive area district and a category two critical aquifer recharge area. Having reviewed the application materials, the Terry property meets the criteria for enrollment space significant wildlife habitat area category for three points under the Thurston County Public Benefit Rating System and a 50% reduction in market value. Based on the following factors, which are included in RCW 8434 and in the Thurston County Open Space Tax Program Guidelines. The property contains type F stream, which supports species meeting CAO important species criteria. The majority of the property contains emergent wetland, which provides crucial habitat for CAO important species. And the applicant submitted supporting documents with their application, including a habitat management plan prepared by a qualified biologist who assessed the site. The planning commission held a work session on April 5th, 2023 on the current open space application. At the end of this work session, the planning commission agreed to set this public hearing. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Olympian on April 13. In addition, a webmail announcement was sent to the community planning division's email to serve on April 20 and a press release, press release was issued on April 24 as well as notification letters to all neighbors within 500 feet of the applicant's parcel. Thurston County Community Planning updated their website with all available documents considered at this hearing. And as of today, no public comments have been received. Commissioners, this concludes my remarks and discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions from the planning commissioners? All right, well, I'm going to move on to public testimony and then we'll, after all that, we'll work back, close hearing, work back to a work session. So at this time, we'll take public testimony on this particular application. You'll have 3 minutes to speak. In the boardroom here, I have Marcy Cleaver that I'd like to address the commission. You have 3 minutes.
So I think I signed the wrong one.
Oh. Okay, no, no problem at all. Is there anybody else in the in the audience that would like to address the planning commission on this application?
I wouldn't mind saying, it sounds wonderful.
Thank you very much. All right, well, then we'll move on to Zoom and see if there's anybody there that would like to address the planning commission. If you would, please raise your hand. You'll have 3 minutes. I don't see anybody that would like to speak, so. This public hearing is now closed and we'll start our work session. Any planning commissioners have any questions for staff or any discussion? Hearing none, I would certainly entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Chair.
Please.
I move to recommend approval of the application from James Perry Jr. to be accepted into the open space tax program for the classification of 12.84 acres as current use assessment for parcel 11714110000 located at 8512 Spurgeon Creek Road Southeast.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the application from James Terry Jr. to be accepted into the open space tax program for the classification of 12.84 acres as current use assessment for parcel 11714110000 located at 8512 Spurgeon Creek Road Southeast. Call for the vote?
Commissioner Nelson?
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen?
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Hi.
Commissioner Pesinger?
Hi.
Commissioner Day?
Hi.
Commissioner Helverson?
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi.
Commissioner Casino?
Hi, that motion passes unanimously 8 to 0. Thank you very much. Next up is a new business is a work session on long-term agricultural zoning with Ashley Arrais.
And Maya.
And Maya. Maya Tippel, thank you.
Yeah, we'll be bouncing back and forth just to make it as lively as possible.
Sounds good.
Um, so Ashley Rye, you're in my new role, the agriculture community program leader. Um, I just want to open this up. This is a really big project. You'll see me for probably the next five or six meetings. Um, so I am really excited to be here, um, working with you all on this important set of proposals, as Marcy pointed out, um, to protect farmland and also to support farmers here in Thurston County. So tonight we're going to share an overview of how we got here and more importantly, how the community has shaped this body of work. And before I go any further, I do want to recognize that we have four of our community stakeholders present, and I just want to point them out. We've got Greg John Block over there. We've got Jeff and we had, you heard from Sam Payne online and we also have Loretta Sepinin. I think that's it. Um, but you'll hear more about their work. They spent countless hours on that, on what you were looking at. Acknowledge them. Um, this truly has been a collaborative project working from the ground up. Um, and we look forward to continuing the conversation with the planning commission. We are going to cover a lot of material, but we're probably not going to get through the full almost 200-page packet. Um, but I'm sure to pause throughout the presentation, um, so that you can ask any clarifying questions. And we're hoping, since you moved so quickly through your other agenda items, that we'll have plenty of time for discussion. And if we can't answer everything on the spot, because I'm sure you're going to come up with questions we don't know the answers to. Um, we are reserving time, um, it is on your next meeting to really just start diving in and answering those follow-up questions. We'll also be inviting our stakeholders to the table with us to help engage in that discussion and answer questions that you might have for them, because a lot of ways, they are the experts. They're the farmers and the farmland protection advocates. Um, so with all of that, are you ready to dive in? I see smiles. Yes. Okay, Maya, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Ashley. Uh, hopefully y'all can hear me well tonight. I've been having some issues with my headphones, so I think I finally got that figured out after much technical pain. But Maya Tippel, senior planner for the record, and as Ashley said, will be tag teaming the presentation tonight. I have been facilitating the agriculture zoning expansion part of the community-driven ag review project. And specifically as it relates to the appeal, which I'll talk a little bit more about in this presentation. And we are front-loading a lot of material tonight, so we're going to go over a lot of information. Uh, we do want you to take the next two weeks to digest it, bring back questions, think about it. So we don't, we don't need to have every question asked tonight. We are intentionally budgeting time at the next meeting to continue this conversation. So I want the planning commission to know that that we we want this conversation to continue at the next meeting. We're not trying to get it complete tonight. It's just um, front-loading the information so you can think about what questions you'd like to ask moving forward. So tonight, as I just stated, we'll be front-loading all that material. I'll provide an overview of the project, a brief Cliff Notes version of state law and county history around long-term agriculture zoning. And then Ashley will provide a summary of our outreach efforts and the stakeholder group that we worked with, who was just critical in the process of this update and all of the options that you're seeing tonight. And then we'll go into the proposed changes and what they are and what they mean. So the main drivers for this project, this goes back to 2019 when we were working on our last periodic comprehensive plan update. And as part of that update, we received a lot of public comment from the community about agriculture specifically, and that there was a need to update our policies and update our programs to better support agriculture in the community. And during that update in 2019, the planning commission made a recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners look into this further. And following that, the Board of County Commissioners did add it as a docket item. I do want to add that in early 2020, January of 2020, we were appealed on our 2019 periodic update. That appeal is still going on, so this docket item is in response to that appeal in part. Uh, it's also in response to some of the community priorities that were identified. And so, so we are responding that to that appeal. And specifically that appeal was on what data we were using for soils and designation of long-term agriculture in Thurston County. So that's one piece that we've looked at along with many others that were identified by our community members as a priority to look at. And so the history of this project, we've kicked off work in early 2021 and that started with a survey that went out to the community. We had a pretty robust survey. I don't have a lot of details on that with me tonight, but if the planning commission is interested, I'm happy to bring uh, more of that back. And then in May of 2021, we presented the information on that survey to the Board of County Commissioners. And from that survey, we were able to identify the main priorities of the community that they wanted us to look into further. And one piece of that was agriculture zoning. There were a number of other pieces that make up the broader community-driven review of ag project. And a lot of those are underway. Some of them have been complete. Ashley will talk about that a little bit more here in a second. But specific to the agriculture zoning update in uh, early 2022, the Board of County Commissioners provided direction on what specifically we're going to be looking at in terms of how those lands are sighted. And so it's not all of the criteria. The board explicitly gave us direction to look at a few of the criteria as identified by the community and in response to the appeal. And then from October of last year to February, March of this year, we've been working with a stakeholder group. And they have put in a lot of time and effort to help us arrive at the options that are before the planning commission tonight. Um, Ashley, I'm going to hand this slide off to you.
Yeah, so this is my work plan, ag program manager. Um, so the ag zoning update is just one piece. And the board, I just want to highlight because it's really coming out of this group. The board recently updated the agricultural critical areas provisions. Um, they also just yesterday expanded eligibility for farm and farms here in the county, smaller farms and ones outside long-term ag zoning to be eligible for the board's open space tax program, similar to that application that there was just a public hearing held on. Um, and then we're really excited, um, that we found out about a month ago that, um, we received almost $400,000 grant, um, Habitat Strategic Initiative Lead Grant to really take a comprehensive look at our transfer development rights programs and purchase of development rights programs. So just want to highlight, you know, that the ag zoning tool, it's one tool in the toolbox. There's a lot of tools that the county uses to protect farmland and support farmers. And this will be sort of a common thread, um, because what we heard from our stakeholder group and the community is make sure you're using all the tools in the toolbox, not just one. I'll turn it back to you, Maya.
Great, so focusing back on agriculture zoning in Thurston County. As Ashley said, we have a lot of different methods and this is just one of them. But our zoning for agriculture is also a designation that lives in our comprehensive plan and it protects lands for agriculture essentially by limiting the development potential. So what this means that instead of being able to put one house every five acres, it's one house per 20 acres in the long-term agriculture zone. That's kind of the primary piece is folks can't subdivide it as far down. And this was a very important piece in our community conversations and our work with the stakeholder group. Uh, so for lands that go from rural residential and resource 1 to 5, which is our largest residential zoning in Thurston County. And they're converted to long-term agriculture either through this update or in the past update in the 90s. This is commonly referred to along among the stakeholder group members as loss of development rights. And this was a continued thread that was brought up throughout the conversations. So the county protects certain lands that can support agriculture through zoning because we're required to do so under state law, but it's not intended to protect all agricultural lands. So this isn't meant for every single farm that's out there in Thurston County. It's really only meant to apply to lands that can support commercial agriculture. And there's some state law and some state guidance around what that actually means that I'll go over in a little bit. But to to determine which lands we protect based on that, we use certain what we call designation criteria, which are basically policies that live in our comprehensive plan. And they determine where those lands are sighted. They include things like soils information, parcel size, proximity to urban areas, services and utilities, um, just patterns of subdivisions nearby. All those types of criteria feed into how we cite these lands. So as I mentioned, in early 2022, the board set the scope of which criteria we look into specifically. And this was based on not only the appeal, but the feedback we got from the community during the survey and through public comments. So, uh, the first that's not on this list is the soils. That was kind of a given because we were under appeal and we had to take a look at that. And then the main criteria that the board asked us to look into additional to that are to, one, consider agriculture zoning in our urban growth areas. Uh, two, consider zoning smaller acreage parcels for long-term agriculture. And three, to consider changing the size requirement for agricultural blocks of land. And, uh, this last piece, agricultural blocks of land is basically how much long-term agriculture do you have to have in one spot in order for it to be included? So now going over county history on agricultural lands, long-term agriculture in the county. And uh, this is really just a high-level Cliff Notes version. There's more detail in the memo that was sent out. But the county first adopted a long-term agriculture zoning in 1993. And the criteria is relatively close to what we have today, but there have been some changes over time. So in 2005, we were appealed on our periodic update at that time. And uh, the appellant alleged that there were two specific designation criteria that weren't consistent with state law and those were related to land use and parcel size. And because we weren't consistent with those two criteria, we were failing to protect several thousand acres of land. So that went through the court and appeals and all of that. And basically what the courts came back and said was your parcel size criteria is fine. It's consistent with state law. However, the land use criteria that the county was applying at that time was not consistent with state law and the county had to reevaluate it. And that land use criteria was specifically stating that it needed to be used for current use agriculture. And so that's where we got hemmed up. The designation is not only intended to apply to active farms, it's intended to be applied to lands that can be used as farms. Uh, so folks don't necessarily need to be actively farming on the land for it to be included in this designation. And so, uh, that was one of the major changes that the county had to make back in the early 2000s. So we made those updates in 2007, 2008. It took a while to come into compliance with that appeal. And then in 2013, the county considered pulling two areas out of our long-term agriculture designation. We had not done anything like that since it was adopted in the early 90s. Uh, but these were, it was around 220 acres and the county was pulling it out of long-term ag and rezoning it as rural 1 to 10. And again, we were And again, we were appealed on that and we went into a negotiated settlement agreement where the county added back in to the long-term ag zoning and those lands could stay out. And so there was some additional clause that was added in the comp plan at that time that the soils criteria is non-exclusive, which allowed for those two new parcels to be added in. So, uh, long-term agriculture is really intended to protect lands over the long term, over the next twenty years at least. So once they're in there, it can be difficult to remove them from this designation. And then fast forwarding to today and part of the reason that we're talking about this tonight is we were appealed in twenty twenty on our two thousand and nineteen comp plan update. Specifically, the county needed to look at using updated soils information. And in addition to that, we're considering a lot of the community comment and themes that we heard from community members throughout the survey about changes that they'd like to see to the designation criteria. So now moving into state law, again, this is another Cliff Notes version. I'm not going to go into great detail, but this is all in the memo. So state law does provide guidance and it requires that counties must protect natural resources. This includes agriculture, forest, mineral lands. And again, that's not intended to protect all of these areas. These areas can occur outside of that, like you can have timber outside of your long-term forestry. You can have agriculture outside your long-term agriculture. It's really only intended to protect areas that have long-term commercial significance. And I'll go into a little bit about what that means. So the WACS do provide guidance on what this is and definitions around that. Basically, what long-term commercial significance is defined as is land that has the physical characteristics that when they're taken into consideration relating to proximity to population and the possibility of more intense uses around that area, it's capable of producing the specified resource at a commercially sustainable level over a twenty-year planning period. So there's not a dollar threshold. It it's not based on any sort of income amount. It's just getting at the fact that that resource industry can be supported on that land over a twenty-year planning period over the long term. Agricultural resource lands are also defined under state law. And there is guidance that counties must approach this on a county-wide basis and not on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So the maps that you see tonight, they were all done on a county-wide basis. We kind of apply this at a whole look. We don't go in and do each individual parcel. And getting at what state law provides this guidance as things that we should look at when we're determining how to cite these lands. So certain characteristics should be considered, like not being characterized by urban growth, being used or capable of being used for agriculture production. And then long-term commercial significance, which is determined by a number of factors. And those include soils, proximity to public utilities, services, proximity to urban growth areas, tax status, nearby land use patterns and a history of permits in the area. And so Thurston County's designation criteria is fairly consistent with this guidance under state law. I've included the specific designation criteria in the packet, but it generally aligns with these same criteria that are provided in the WACS. And the goal of designating agricultural resource lands as well as other resource industries under state law is to designate and zone an amount that is sufficient to maintain that industry and to enhance the economic viability of that industry. So basically, we just need to make sure that we're protecting enough land to support this use over the long term, over the next twenty-year planning period. And the goal of this is to make sure that all of that land doesn't get fragmented and then developed. So looking at the county's current designation criteria, this is a very, very abbreviated version. The actual policies in the comp plan are quite more detailed. So some of the language here is shortened just to fit on the slide. But for soil types, we consider predominantly prime farmland soils. And we have a list of about, I wrote the number down, but I don't have it on this slide, I don't think. It's about twenty-nine soils that are currently designated. And the new data adds in about twice as many new prime farmland soils. And that is from the United States Department of Agriculture. That's not data that the county comes up with. Uh, that's data that comes from the federal Department of Agriculture. For availability of public facilities and services, our criteria states that these must be located away from urban growth areas and the twenty-year planning timeframe for projected water and sewer, which typically aligns with urban growth area boundaries. Land capability and tax status, the lands must be primarily devoted to agricultural uses or capable of being used for production of those. Relationship and proximity to urban growth areas, currently we require that these be outside of urban growth areas and separated from them. The predominant parcel size in Thurston County is twenty acres or more currently. Uh, that's not to say that there aren't smaller parcels included in that. If they're in a clump, there you could get a smaller parcel that's included in that. But generally speaking, they're going to be twenty acres or larger in the current designation. Land use settlement pattern, so no greater density than one unit per five acres. We typically see this on at least five-acre parcels or ten-acre parcels, so lower density. Proximity to markets, uh, this is not too much of a concern. At one point it may have been, but currently um, all of the areas in Thurston County generally have good access to roads, rail, uh, and transportation to get to markets. And then the agricultural diversity, which is what we are referring to, the block size of agricultural land. This is the clump of land that needs to be designated in order to be included in the protection. Currently, it's three hundred and twenty acres minimum if it's standalone. If it's close to another area, it's two hundred acres. And then environmental considerations, all of these areas need to fall outside of natural shoreline environments. And this is the current criteria that we apply in our comprehensive plan. And this is what that map looks like. So currently, we designate and protect through zoning about fifteen thousand five hundred acres. And roughly seventy-two percent of those are existing farms. So when the county did this initially in the nineties, it was mostly existing farms that were protected under this designation. Uh, there's a couple areas that are not actively farming, but by and large, uh, most of them are active farms. And so what do other jurisdictions do? Um, this is a requirement under state law, so other counties are also applying this. And you, they have, uh, they have discretion on what their criteria look like. So some other counties have a little bit different criteria. But all the other counties we looked at, Skagit, Pierce, Snohomish, Lewis, Clark and Watcom, all consider, uh, prime farmland soils. To what extent they consider that varies. So most counties say that there must be a majority of prime farmland soils on the property. Pierce County has kind of a double threshold of fifty percent or twenty acres or twenty-five percent and ten acres. And then, um, other, other counties use different terms like all lands with prime soils. For minimum parcel size, twenty acres is kind of the most common number that we see across other counties that are applying this. So Lewis and Clark are both using twenty acres. Snohomish has it as ten acres is kind of the predominant parcel size. Watcom County has it just vague, large enough to maintain ag operations. And then Skagit and Pierce have separate districts or zones and those apply different acreages. For the agricultural block size, uh, criteria that the county applies, three hundred and twenty acres or two hundred if nearby to an another area. There are only two other counties that we looked at that are currently applying this and they're both smaller. So Skagit does a hundred and sixty acre minimum. And then Snohomish has a forty acre minimum. So you gotta have block of at least that size. And then no other county that we looked at is currently applying long-term agriculture within the urban growth areas. But some of them just have language that says they consider proximity to those areas. And what that means when it's applied on a map, i- it's not specific. It doesn't say it needs to be a mile out from an urban growth area or a couple miles out. It's just pretty vague. So, um, that's really kind of up to their interpretation when they're applying it on a map. And handing it back over to Ashley to go over the outreach.
Yeah, I feel like I get to cover the the fun part. Um, so as Maya mentioned, the board did direct staff to form a stakeholder work group to review those criteria and provide suggestions on changes to the planning commission. We did invite over thirty people to participate and we feel really fortunate that we had more than a dozen regularly attend every meeting we held. Um, and three of those are current agriculture advisory committee members. The remaining members represented a very diverse set of interests, um, including large and small farms. We had folks participate in our work group that had never participated in a public process with the county before, which was, which was great to have new voices. We had farmland protection advocates, um, representatives like the Sierra Club, American Farmland Trust, as well as representatives for the building community. We had Olympia Master Builders and members of Thurston Millers Association. We also had an additional twenty technical experts that we kept in the loop regularly. Every time there was a meeting, they were invited. Every time we sent out materials, they were sent to them and we invited them to participate. Um, and so they also were there at the table if topics came up that, um, were, you know, a more important to them, like we had representation from the city of Olympia and city of Tumwater the night that we discussed agriculture zoning in the UGA. Next slide. Oh, there you go. Um, so this group spent countless hours diving a lot deeper past the Cliff Notes, um, into all the background information you just heard, um, to develop a series of different map options. Um, it wasn't an easy topic, but the members really respected one another. Um, and they worked hard to identify concerns in the agricultural community. They also shared ideas for broader changes to protect farmland and support farmers. And then finally, they did the tough job of trying to narrow down the map option so that you didn't see ten different maps. Um, we're only going to show you three, so you can thank them for that. Um, so we are very appreciative of their efforts and look forward to them joining us, um, at the next meeting. Okay, so what did they share? In addition to reviewing the agricultural zoning policies and the criteria, um, for long-term ag, the stakeholder group shared major themes that helped shape the set of proposals, um, that you have before you. So the piece right here at the top, um, was something we heard every meeting. Uh, it's in every, every meeting summary that you'll find online. And that's it. That farmland conservation is a community benefit and that the farmers shouldn't carry the financial burden alone. Um, stakeholder work group members really felt like financial compensation for the loss of development rights and operating capital needs should go hand in hand with expanding agricultural zoning. Um, as I touched on earlier, we are excited that we got a grant to comprehensively update a lot of the county's conservation incentive programs, compensation programs that kind of used interchangeably. Um, it is on a different timeline though. We're moving as fast as we can, but it's not something that we could bring before you on the timeline of the appeal that Maya referenced. Another thing the group made clear is that agriculture zoning is just one tool in the toolbox. I told you, I'd say that again. Um, and that the county needs to do more to support farmers. For example, allowing for additional uses in our agricultural zoning. So farmers can diversify their income base or make it easier to get an agricultural business up and running. And as you know, farming here in Thurston County is not a one-size-fits-all. We have a lot of different types and sizes of farms, um, and our agricultural programs and policies need to reflect that. And finally, water availability is a, is a concern for everybody now, um, especially farmers. Um, and a lot of the prime farmland soils that you'll see on the map are prime if irrigated. So it becomes an even bigger concern. And although a lot of it is outside the county's jurisdiction, um, just making sure that we're mindful of that, um, in our decisions. So next slide, please. So then we took the ideas from the stakeholder work group, um, and the maps and scenarios you'll see in a moment, out to the broader community. Um, and we held a series of community meetings and had one-on-one conversations. The one-on-one conversations were really targeted to, you know, stakeholders that we know are very engaged um, in ag or that we thought would be impacted by an expansion of the agricultural zoning. So you'll see up there the long list of, of folks I've been able to chat with and Maya's been able to chat with over the last few months. Um, and then we've been regularly checking in with our agricultural advisory committee, our tourism committee, um, as well as our voluntary stewardship program work group. And most of what we heard, um, in those discussions echoed what we heard from the stakeholder work group, which was reassuring. Means they were pretty much on, on topic. Um, there was general support for farmland conservation amongst the broader community, as well as preserving a rural aesthetic. We heard concerns about a decrease in potential housing inventory. Um, there was general support for residential clustering requirements and providing more flexibility for farmers, that whole expanded, expanded list of allowed uses, um, in agricultural zone. And finally, we heard widespread support for updating county farmland conservation programs. We do plan to continue our outreach efforts throughout this process, leading up to a public hearing before the planning commission as well as before the board. Um, but there is a lot of momentum right now. Um, and the community is looking forward to sharing their feedback directly with you on the map scenarios that we brought up to them. And I'm going to turn it back to Maya to go through what those map scenarios are.
Thanks. So now we're going to go into the proposed changes. This is kind of the fun part of the meeting. And Ashley and I will both be talking about, uh, different pieces on, on these next couple of slides. So going through the designation criteria that the board directed us to look into and kind of what the changes were that came out of the stakeholder group process. So starting with soils, uh, currently we designate land that has fifty percent or more prime farmland soils and meets all the other criteria. And what the stakeholder group came up with is to look at bumping this up and only protect the lands that have the most prime farmland soils, so seventy-five percent or more. And, uh, we looked at this, uh, with the stakeholders and, uh, the mapping options before you will have a couple of different scenarios of that. And then for open, urban growth areas, we do not currently designate in urban growth areas. The stakeholder group looked at this and considered this. They looked at the numbers and they discussed it further. And ultimately, where the stakeholder group landed was that this is not the appropriate tool to protect agriculture within the urban growth areas. But that the county should be looking at, uh, different avenues to better support agriculture in those areas. Um, so that is something that we will be evaluating as part of joint plan review. And more specifically with joint, uh, UGA code updates is a good tool to look at ways we can better support agricultural uses in those areas. The next two criteria that the board asked us to look into, uh, so agricultural blocks of land. And again, this is the clump of land that it needs to amount to in order to be protected in this sort of designation and zoning. Currently, it's two hundred to three twenty acres. And the group did discuss reducing this significantly somewhere to between forty and a hundred acres. And, um, some members felt that this was still a very important piece to keep in the designation criteria because it reduces nuisance claims and it can reduce the conflict with neighboring uses. Uh, and we heard, we heard firsthand accounts of that when we went out to the community. Uh, incidences where folks could relay where they thought this might be important. For parcel size, currently we protect predominantly twenty-acre parcels. Again, you can have scattered smaller lands in there, but majority will be twenty acres or larger in the current map. And the group discussed reducing this somewhere between ten and twenty. The stakeholder group actually looked at a couple of options that reduced this as low as five and ten acres. So they did consider that. They did consider removing this entirely and going down to a five-acre minimum. And they landed on twenty acres or reducing it slightly. We did talk with our stakeholder group about the average agricultural parcel size, which is fifteen and a half acres. And, uh, it's important to note that for planning purposes, we use parcel size and not necessarily farm size. But a farm can be comprised of several parcels. So, uh, parcel size is not necessarily indicative of, um, the actual farm size. And where that lands us is we can have an option that includes half of a farm because it's protecting on the because it's protecting on the parcel basis and not on the farm basis. So something that we can consider with the planning commission is adding an option in for landowners who have a farm and maybe half of their farm is protected and half isn't, to consider opting in their other parcels. And that's kind of a policy criteria that we could consider. It's not in the drafts right now, but we heard that tonight through public comment and we could certainly add language that speaks to that. That's a fairly simple change that we could include in our designation criteria. And now the fun part, the maps. So these are probably not very easy to see on the PowerPoint screen. You do have printed copies. But I'm so happy to share that we have an online web viewer. And so if you really want to dive into some of the options, you can go to thurstonag.org. That's thurstonag.org and you can go on an online web viewer and really dive into the details. This was an ask from the community, so we made sure to make that happen before our first planning commission meeting. So this map on this slide shows soils in Thurston County. This dark, darker green, which I hope this shows up on the PowerPoint screen, but the darker green that is scattered throughout are the current prime farmland soils that are in the current comprehensive plan. And that is based on the nineteen ninety USDA Soil Survey. So it's three decades old. It's outdated information. This lighter green color are all of the other new prime farmland soils that are currently considered prime in the new soil data. So that's using the twenty twenty-two USDA Soil Survey. And as you can see, there's a significant amount more of land that is pulled in from that. With our current comp plan, it's twenty-nine soil types and around eighty-three thousand acres that are considered prime farmland. When you consider the new data under the twenty twenty-two USDA Soil Survey, that pulls in another twenty-nine soil types. So it doubles the amount of soil types that we're protecting. And it adds about a hundred thousand acres. So we have a lot of prime farmland in Thurston County, a hundred and eighty-three thousand acres. And looking at the scenarios that are based on stakeholder feedback. So this is the baseline scenario, which just changes the criteria to respond to the appeal. The only thing that is adjusted here is the soils information to update using the twenty twenty-two USDA Soil Survey. And the results of that scenario are adding around twenty-two thousand new acres of long-term agriculture designation and zoning, and around forty-five percent of those are existing farms. So looking at scenario one, this is changes based on our stakeholder themes. All of the criteria are kept the same in our, as our current designation criteria, except soils are updated. And soils are also updated to only include parcels that have seventy-five percent or more prime farmland soils. The agricultural block of land requirement is reduced to a hundred acres. And the other criteria, UGA and parcel size, stay the same here. This would add twelve thousand new acres of long-term agriculture to our current designation. That's this dark green area. And roughly twenty-nine percent of those would be existing farms. And then scenario two, based on our stakeholder themes, again, using the same designation criteria. But here we've changed to use the new soils data to only include parcels that have seventy-five percent or more prime farmland soils. And this reduces the parcel size down to fifteen acres. And it also reduces the agricultural block size of land to forty acres. So that's a, a big drop. The last scenario is a hundred. This one drops down to forty. And now kicking it back over to Ashley.
So, oh yeah. I was trying to understand table two, because this is what you're talking about, like this table here, basically, that's the one that gives the the twelve thousand acres and nineteen thousand. So what, it was like for scenario one, it was seventy-five percent or more prime farmland? And then what was the size of the farm? Was it forty, was it forty acres? Or scenario one? For scenario one?
For scenario one, it stays at twenty acres is the predominant parcel size. And then the clump of farms, kind of the clump of ag land that you need to have drops down to a hundred acres from three hundred and twenty.
Okay, so for the, for the base, so that's the baseline is three hundred and twenty acres? And still seventy-five percent?
No, it's, it's fifty percent. It's the existing criteria with just updated soils information is the baseline.
Okay, so it would increase the amount that needs to be prime?
Yeah, so like the, where those soils exist in the county or the soils that we're considering prime farmland, that changes, that expands. But all the other criteria stay the same in the baseline.
So it would be fifty percent, so baseline is fifty percent, how many acres? Forty, twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty acres?
Yeah.
And then a three hundred and twenty acres?
Yeah, it's, it's that two hundred to three hundred and twenty acre range for the agricultural blocks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and real quickly, thank you for pointing that out. I realize I did not provide a table in the packet that easily compares these. So before the next meeting, I can prepare something like that, so you can easily cross-reference the changes.
Thanks. Any other, any other clarifying questions before we move on to the regulation amendments?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll start since we're on the maps. The soil types. I know a lot of the soil types on the list that I saw either said prime if drained or prime if irrigated. And I don't see how we can justify calling a piece of land that's too wet to farm, prime farmland, when I think we all know there's absolutely no way Thurston County will let you grant it with good reason. So I think where we first need to look is should we include those, the prime if drained, the prime if irrigated? Because the problem I have with irrigated is Thurston County has no control over whether you're not, your farmland is irrigated. And again, if I'm not irrigated now, I highly doubt that I'm ever going to be able to irrigate my property. So, I mean, I don't know that those are good qualifications for property of long-term commercial significance. So.
Those are definitely comments that we've heard from the stakeholder group. Do we want to, oh, sorry.
How many of these areas that have been re-designated fall into the HPA?
The, the Habitat Conservation Plan? That would apply to properties regardless of whether they're zoned for residential or zoned for agriculture. A lot of agricultural practices, though, especially if they're done with conservation in mind, can be beneficial to allow those protected species. So, but yes, it would apply still.
The Oregon spotted frog just jumps to the mind, particularly down in that one area.
Yeah.
And I saw a lot of green and dark green.
It would still apply.
And so, I mean, how could those areas be considered prime farmland then? If they really couldn't provide, you know, tilling and everything else?
They can, and we still have the MCP expert with us for another week and a half. But under the four D rule, am I saying that right? Agricultural practices are exempt. And so farmers can continue to farm in those areas. Now, building structures is a whole nother. But in terms of the actual farming practices, they can consume under the four D goal.
Yeah, well, I mean, and on that, I'll just note that the Conservation District does have a sort of a program called Frogs on the Farm where they're working on how farmers can actually work on enhancing spotted frog habitat in the spring.
I just met with one of those farmers yesterday that's enrolled, enrolled in that. So yeah, it is definitely, they're, they're not mutually exclusive.
But I, I was wondering if you could explain a little bit to back up a second. I have a questions before we move on, just about the commercial criteria and I could kind of curious, I mean, the, the average farm size is fifteen and there are a lot of commercial, I mean, there's commercially viable farms that are smaller than that. So how, you know, what was the discussion around how you, you know, sort of talk about what's commercial and what's not? And then what's an appropriate size for this designation? Because I'm, you know, you said that there was discussion about the size and that it kind of landed on, was it the twenty that's bigger than the average farm? Or was it the fifteen, which is the average farm? I forget. But, but how, you know, what was the summit, just kind of enlighten us a little bit on how these were being discussed?
I think before I answer that question, I just want to highlight that it gets really confusing. So the, the median farm size in the farm census is around fifteen acres. In a, well, in the, in the census. Then the average parcel size is also about fifteen acres in agricultural parcel size, but they don't, they're two different things. So I just want to highlight that, that I'll keep saying parcel. I mean, it is hard to separate it from farm. But yeah, so the agricultural, the, the parcel size, which, you know, you just, if you have just a few really large parcels that can kind of skew that, is that fifteen acres. So we looked at that. Also considered the smaller ones. When, when we went down to five acres and developing mapping scenarios, it was over a hundred thousand acres, I think, in some of the scenarios in terms of the amount of land that would be brought in. And so I think the conversations among the stakeholder work group, it being a very diverse, diverse representation, folks was, is, do we need that much for, you know, a twenty-year supply of agricultural land? And if we really want the, want conservation incentive programs or compensation programs to be able to support farmers, is that, is that a number that, you know, we'll ever be able to, as a county, come up with the funding? For, now, of course, as the parcel size goes down, there are fewer development rights. So that also was discussed. I'm sorry, that's a lot of, I'm happy to answer follow-up questions. I know that's a lot of information.
I don't know if this is a follow-up question, but I'll, was it determined how much farmland and growth of farm products we need to feed our population or to, or does that matter? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I mean, the, the state doesn't provide a lot of guidance on what that target looks like. I think numbers that were brought up in the stakeholder work group is, you know, we've got census information and how many farms exist today and trying our best as a community to protect the farms that we currently have or protect the amount of land that is currently in farming for future, for future use. But there isn't like a stated target for how much land should be set aside. And, and this is, so just really quick, this is one of the reasons that we're going to invite the stakeholders to speak for themselves next meeting, so that we're not speaking on their behalf. But yeah, these are all great questions and they, very similar to the discussions and questions that we had.
I have just one more. All kinds of markups on it, because this is a fun topic. Can you just say, you know, I noticed that one of the criteria that, you know, even though there's this concept of commercial, there is this kind of added, you know, when designating agricultural resource lands, counties and cities may consider food security issues. That's for number four of whatever that is paragraph. Was that discussed? What, was there any discussion on how to prioritize that? How to include that in the considerations?
I think it, it sort of gets back to like how much, how much land is currently in farm use and trying to get as close to that number as possible that those conversations came up. In terms of food security specifically, I know it's on a lot of people's minds. But it wasn't discussed as, you know, a standalone criteria. It sort of fell outside the scope of what the board identified.
Okay, and that links to my other question about outreach. What, what measures were taken to make sure that equity was considered in the, in the outreach? You know, sort of looking at the list of stakeholders and so forth, like, was there discussion of finding some way to broaden the, the input?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think there, every time we talk to someone, we ask them, who else should we talk to? Who is, who should be at this table that is not at this table? And in terms of like the outreach we did for the community meetings, we were really pleasantly surprised at how many people attended, the fact that they came from the surrounding area. They brought their neighbors, word spread. We even flagged, flagged someone down and yelled that was driving by and invited them to participate. But I mean, the, where we held, I mean, mo, mo, well, in terms of equity, the areas that that we did outreach in are also the areas that I know are where our populations are that, you know, might be identified as, kind of, I'm sorry, I'm trying to come up with the word and I'm not coming up with it. But it definitely is a consideration when we reached out to folks and we, if there are any groups that you know of, like through Wazoo Extension, they are working with refugee and immigrant farmers. And so when I chatted with Wazoo Extension, it was like, hey, can you, can you help be like that trusted partner to relay any concerns? And what we heard largely from those groups was access to land. Sam Payne on our group represents a veteran farmers organization. And so he brought a lot of those concerns to the table and represented small market gardeners, direct, direct, sorry, direct market farmers. And was a, a very strong advocate and voice on behalf of them. And I would say that that's, you know, in terms of looking at Thurston County and our population here, veterans are definitely table. And Sam was actually one of the people that hadn't participated in a public process and is now attending agriculture advisory committee meetings and planning commission meetings. So I don't know, did that, I'd be happy to follow up or if you have other groups or people like, or an open door and want to hear from them.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that the food security end might be another end to think about that.
Wazoo Extension works with a lot of those programs. And so I've had a lot of conversations with Stephen Bramall, the director there, in trying to understand those pieces.
What is the proposal to get past the issue Commissioner Nelson brought up about water rights?
It's a tough, I might actually, I'm going to ask Maya to help with the water rights one, because she's more familiar with the, the state law around it. And in terms of our obligation as a county to designate long-term ag. Is that okay, Maya?
Yeah, so we do have policies in our comprehensive plan that address water availability, water quality, water quantity. But in terms of how that is affected through permitting, it's really kind of through the state jurisdiction. So Department of Ecology regulates those water rights. And again, that's a theme that came up consistently throughout the process. We did actually discuss what it, what it would mean to pull out prime if irrigated, prime if drained. And ultimately, where the group landed was include them in these scenarios that are going forward. And if there are conditions that come out through this process that imply a land is not usable for that, then reevaluate and pull it out based on that kind of site-specific criteria. So we, we do the best we can. We have to do this county-wide mapping effort. But going to a parcel level and evaluating each parcel's water rights, availability and all of that information is just not practical and it's not really the intent of state law for this. So the gist of that answer is we guide water to the best of the county's ability through the policies in the comp plan, where we have jurisdiction to do so. But most of that falls to the Department of Ecology to regulate.
There's a follow-up question to that then. How are we partnering with the Department of Ecology to put something in the state law to enhance farmlands through water rights?
That's a great question. We did, I know Ashley did have some discussions with the Department of Ecology about transferring water rights between properties and what that looks like. But the answer we got back is it's difficult and it's complicated. So we can, we can certainly, I mean, those are the kinds of policies that we can look at, including in the comp plan, to further have those conversations and, you know, continue down that path to make sure that we are doing our best due diligence. to make sure that we are doing our best due diligence to, from the county's perspective, facilitate that for our farming community.
It is, it is a really tough one. As soon as the question came up, I called, called the Department of Ecology, was hoping to get lots of answers and it didn't, I didn't get a lot of answers. And the, I think even if you look at their map of where the water rights, they have a disclaimer that says it's only about seventy percent accurate. So it's not really something that we can use as part of our planning process. Another thing we looked at is, I think it's Lewis and Pierce have specific provisions for, there are farm uses that don't rely on soils. And so it, it is okay to have, you know, lands designated that might have prime if irrigated soils without water rights because there are, there are ag uses that are not, not a soil dependent. But those are all policy discussions. And we'd be happy to bring some of those policies, you know, before the planning commission. So you can take a look at what they look, you know, what they look like and how other counties have addressed that.
I just think it's kind of disingenuous to put forward a scenario that shows one hundred eighty three thousand acres. When only, but Scott, maybe twenty percent of that is, has irrigation rights or less. Or we need to know how much of that less is. And without having any type of communication with the state as to how they're going to solve that problem. Because they also have an interest in developing agriculture. But it doesn't seem like they've got a policy put forth to help the counties do that with water rights. And that's the, that's the big, you know, that's the elephant in the room for agriculture.
Like to move to Commissioner Day.
Well, you answered one of my questions, which was, you know, what are some of the other ranges of, if it's not hundred percent, hundred percent prime, like what are some of the agricultural uses that could happen there? So it was kind of dig on, dig in on Scott's question. So like, do you need this land to be hundred percent prime soiled for it to have agricultural value? And then the other question I had, so I think you answered that.
Answer for question one.
And then I think my other question is, do we track nuisance claims?
I just know since I've started my role, I've been pulled in to a few. But yes, I do think we, we, we could, we could get data on it or more.
Really interested to know if there's actual data to back up the size of the blocks and the reduction in nuisance claims. Because I think like size of the block, like you're going to have bigger surface area that interacts with different types of land uses. So it might actually be backwards, but I'd just be interested if the data brought out the assumption.
I do know what the, so at the first community outreach meeting, we had someone who actually operates a farm in the UGA. And, you know, he's got a ten acre parcel surrounded by smaller lot developments and it is a constant problem. Now, that is not the same as, you know, necessarily a farm out in the rural areas. But he shared his stories and I was like, oh, yeah, that, that is, that is tough. So, yeah, I mean, I would say of all of the, the criteria that we brought out to the broader community, the agricultural blocks was the one that we heard the most feedback on in terms of, you know, we didn't hear anyone say, yes, it should stay two hundred to three twenty. But we also didn't hear folks, you know, a broad, broad support for eliminating it or maybe even going down to forty acres. So that'll be for the planning commission. And so if that, if that information would be helpful, is there like a, a year? I don't know what is going to be available to me, but ideally, would it be like going back three years, going back five years?
I've been hearing this since I was in planning school. So I, and I, I.
How far back?
Those probably fifteen years ago, but it was, it was very anecdotal. And I'd never seen any data analysis on if that block size actually changes.
Just from personal experience, I would assume that the nuisance complaint issue depends more on the number of parcels surrounding the property.
That's my thought. And as some of these blocks get bigger, you actually get more interaction with more parcels. Might actually drive your nuisance claims.
Well, I would just say, if you've got, I, I mean, really does, I don't think it matters, the size of the block. Because if you, if you've got, well, if you've got a hundred acres on one side of you and it's twenty five acre lots, there's twenty possible complaints. And I mean, we're lucky, which I found interesting here that I didn't know about the being close to five acre parcel sizes. Our farm is on traumatic and I can guarantee you they're smaller than five acre parcels right next to us. But anyways, but if you've got that same strip and it's got a house per acre, now you've got a hundred potential complainants. And obviously your odds go up. So I think that's the gist of the, to me personally, who luckily has not had a.
Recently. Probably more important than, yeah.
You're just, I mean, as land development patterns, which is taken into consideration as one of the criteria. But it, I mean, I'm happy to, to check to see what is available and what. And we can also hear from some of the stakeholders that are actively farming and seeing if it is something that they face. A lot of it, the, another thing that came, there was the reduction in nuisance claims. It was also like thirty years ago, when the original block size was created. You know, there's, maybe there was more sharing of equipment, like that was brought up in the stakeholder work group. And there was more reliance between farms on, on that kind of stuff. But as your farm size gets smaller, you're not necessarily sharing big equipment. You might be getting it from the conservation district. So, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of little pieces that go into that. But it is interesting that we're the only county that has a block size that big. And one of the only counties that even has one, so.
I, I got a question. It's a little bit tangential to this. But when I see the proposed maps that have some, some lands up by Beaver Creek or by the chicken farm that dumps into Woodard Bay, it begs the question, would adding LTA to those parcels then add to the toolbox for pollution identification and control programs in those particular areas? Like now, if somebody is in long term ag, does that mean that they might possibly be more scrutinized or have more oversight on what they're doing with their land?
That zoning won't provide that. The county is enrolled in the voluntary stewardship program. So that is the mechanism by which we are monitoring, monitoring agricultural properties and their impact on our critical areas, including water quality. And I, we're kicking off a, a deep dive monitoring report on that, like, right now. In the last few months, we just started that. So all of that applies regardless of whether they have long term axoning.
Change that at all anyway. Okay. Anybody else have any questions before they move on to the next portion of?
I got a couple of comments. So as far as Jim's question and it kind of goes to Helen's question about food security, I don't know the numbers, but there are numbers. And obviously agriculture in the United States is producing more food on less land than it was fifty years ago. So that kind of goes to, you know, it's technology. Different breeding styles for cattle, different traits for grains or grasses, whatever it may be. It's kind, I mean, it's kind of like everything else, you know, you tend to. But you may get more and you still may get more. The other thing I would say when we talk about uses that don't require prime soils, that's a use that doesn't require prime soils. We're looking, to me, we're not, we don't need to protect farmland for that purpose. We need to figure out how, in Thurston County's code and goals and policies, how do we protect those pieces? Because I think we'll get into it when we do this farther. One of my biggest concerns about long term ag is as somebody who has land in long term ag, and I think pretty much everybody who has land in long term ag will tell you this, there's no benefit for me. As a farmer, there's enough, well, I won't say there's nothing, but the difference between the zoning code for long term ag and the zoning code for RRR one to five is very limited. I don't get breaks on my fees to put up a barn. I, not really, I mean, the critical areas is the same for everybody. We were promised in the nineties TDRs and it's never come. And I think that's, and I can tell you in whatever it was, two thousand six, maybe, when we were doing the rezone of Thurston County, the county had a meeting for people that were interested in volunteering. And three people showed up. And the question was asked, what's the benefit to me? And the answer was, well, you won't have as many house, you won't be able to build as many houses someday. That's the, that's the gist of it. And I think that goes to you know, as we get farther into this, I think we talk about clustering. Because I know some people have seen me draw a hundred acre square divided into five twenty acre squares. And you've either lost or greatly reduced your ability to farm it. If you put ten one acre squares in this area, you still have that farm. And so that's, I think that's some place where we need to look when we go through this, we get there.
Yeah, I thought until Scott mentioned, because I thought it might be crazy talk, but. What would, what would keep us, so essentially what, essentially what this does is it reduces the zoning density in these areas. Why couldn't you just, if some of the goals, because I mean, we heard earlier in public comment, like we want to be able to keep some of these places, open space to be, to be infiltration banks, things like that. Is this the right tool for protecting open space if it's not prime farmland? And could you, I mean, like Scott's talking about, could we think, be thinking about down zoning some of these places outside the UGAs and up zoning other places to accommodate growth instead of having this one to five blanket everywhere?
I think that's, you're talking comp plan update right now. I, that one did not come up as a stakeholder, I mean, up zoning. Mostly because our, the scope that was given us by the board is, and the appeal is like long term agriculture zoning. But clustering definitely came up. And we have heard concerns about sort of the, you know, there's just going to be less land to build, which I'm not sure, you know, under sustainable Thurston, is that really something that's supposed to be encouraged in that, in the way that it is being done right now? So, yeah, I think you're asking really good questions and putting things out there. Are we ready for the segue into what some of the, at least the changes look like now? And that's not to say that. So axoning largely about farmland protection. And, yeah, we heard that it's not enough to protect farmland if we're not also supporting farmers and making it easier for them to do what they want to do. So we also spent a lot of time in a very short amount of time putting together a package of code updates so that this wouldn't just be about a down zone. As, as you mentioned, Commissioner Day. And whether, what the code updates are really aiming to do is to provide more flexibility for current and prospective farmers. So those that already have land that is own long term ag is, as well as those that might end up with land zoned, long term ag. And the way we do that is by allowing more uses with, within that zoning. And what Commissioner Nelson did not say is that RRR one to five actually allows more ag uses than long term ag. I'm surprised when I go in there and see, like, wait a second, that's allowed there and it's not allowed in long term ag? So reconciling some of that stuff as well as looking into the future and the kind of uses that farmers may want to establish, especially given, you know, we're in the con, or we're in the context of climate mitigation, climate resilience adaptation. There are new uses that are being developed that a farmer might want to put on their site, making it easier for them to do that. Another thing, you know, you'll, you'll see up there clarifying requirements. You know, it's actually, if you clarify development standards and clarify what the, you know, what the target is, it makes the permit process go a lot faster and easier for that property owner. So you'll see in this package, just areas we're trying to clean it up, make it clear both for the property owner as well as the staff here at the county to support the kind of development that they want to do. And then the work group also asked staff to look into other innovative ways to protect farmland and encourage us to consider a residential clustering requirement. And Commissioner Nelson already explained what that is, so I don't have to, thank you. And right now, it's proposed on lands that would not be in long term axoning. I should note that the county already has clustering provisions. It's called planned rural residential development. What we're proposing to do here would be to sort of create provisions that would just apply to the protection of agriculture land. Next slide, oh, already there. So that big package of code updates, that was, that was a lot of fun work to put together. It does include repealing and replacing the agritourism overlay district. If you haven't already printed off a copy of what's currently online, please do that when you're looking at it so you can compare it. The goal there was really to clarify what uses are permitted as well as what development standards would be, would be applied. Based on feedback we got from the agritourism committee as well as other property owners within that district, we are looking at removing barriers like minimum parcel size. And the thought there is if you can meet all of the other development standards, and there's a lot parking, landscaping, doesn't matter whether you're on a two acre parcel or a ten acre parcel. Right now, ten acres is the minimum. But we've got a lot of, a lot of farms occurring on less than ten acres. As, as well as, you know, a lot of the agritourism overlay district is applied to our RRR one five zoned land. And then finally making per, it's, I use streamline because it's the easy term to use. But it's really just making the permit process is easier for folks to navigate by eliminating some of the ambiguity there. You'll also see in your packet, updates to agriculture zoning. And that includes a lot of updated definitions. I went through pretty much every other code in Western Washington as well as the state of Oregon. There's at the state level, so I wanted to read one. But in terms of how they define different ag uses and what kind of ag uses are allowed. And so you'll see both definitions, so make sure to pay close attention to that as well as an expanded list of those uses. And I worked with the ag advisory committee, the voluntary stewardship program. Pretty much every conversation I've had over the last month is like, what are your thoughts on this? Reached out individually to farmers that I know are, you know, have a diversified income base and, you know, things that they see sort of on the horizon in terms of ag uses that, you know, might help keep their farms viable into the future. And so some of the things you'll see are, it's a small, it's farm kitchens as well as commercial biochar facilities, which is a new and exciting.
Say that again.
Biochar facilities, can someone else explain it? Because I will botch it.
It's essentially just activated.
The federal government is now interested in possibly supporting that.
There's, there's a lot of money in the Inflation Reduction Act specifically for farms to, to develop these sort of alternative ways to create products to amend soils. So making it easier for those things to take place as well as just, just general agricultural support services like our farriers and large animal vet clinics. Not, you know, and it's not to say that if you've got a twenty acre parcel, you can take the whole parcel and turn it over to, you know, a vet operation. The way we've tried to address that is if you, it's really just focusing on additional uses on your non-prime farm soil, prime farmland soils. And if you don't have, you don't have any area that is non-prime farmland, allowing up to one acre to be converted. So still trying to keep that focus on protecting farmland while allowing, allowing owners of that land to establish other uses that support the agricultural economy. And then finally, I promise, I'm almost done. I should have brought water. So this residential clustering idea, it would protect agricultural lands and operations by requiring residential development to be clustered. It would be the same number of houses that would be allowed while preserving as much land as possible for agricultural use. The residential parcel sizes, even as it's currently written or only. The residential parcel sizes, even as it's currently written, are only limited by septic and water facilities. Um, and it does retain a higher land value for farmers for ongoing operational needs because it doesn't eliminate those development rights. As it's currently proposed, we place this requirement in the agritourism overlay district because it's already in a period of where focusing a lot of, a lot of efforts, um, in supporting agriculture. It'll, it's up to the planning commission if that's the right boundary for, or the right place for it. Um. Um, and then um, just one, one last note on that. Wacom County um, does have a longstanding model for this. It is, they've got a lot of policies in their comp plan. They have a whole whole section of development standards. And so we looked to them as a model and reached out to them for feedback as we were drafting what, what you have in your packet. Um, and you'll see that it, it would only apply to parcels that are a minimum of ten, twenty acres in size that are currently being farmed. Um, with at least fifty percent of prime farmland soils. So it goes, it's like if we only use long-term axoning as a tool to protect land with seventy-five percent and more prime farmland soils. This is just an additional tool that can be used, um, to protect additional lands for agriculture.
Uh, just for me, for clarification for clustering. Uh, what I heard, I want to make sure I heard it correctly.
I'll let Commissioner Nelson answer.
If I have a hundred acre parcel and to be economically viable, and if I wanted to develop, say, ten acres of that in half acre lots as a cluster. I could take ten acres of my hundred acres and do cluster development for properties.
No.
Yeah, see, that's why.
No, you would, if the hundred acres was probably zone one and twenty, so it would have been five homes altogether. You can cluster five homes down in one corner of it. And that's it. You're not going to be able to add density per hundred acres.
Yeah, see, that's.
Unless that changes.
That's what I'm saying.
Thurston County used to have, uh, density bonus. Yeah, the problem was it was such a huge bonus. And county commissioners did, as county commissioners do, they said, oh yeah, wait, this is way too much. We'll just get rid of it. Instead of saying, and I think it was fifty, fifty-five percent, with maybe sixty-five. And so instead of saying, you know what, we're gonna turn this down to ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, they just did away with it.
See, my point is, is one of the options could be, if you have a hundred acre parcel or forty acre parcel, you could take a corner of that and develop it into quarter acre or half acre lots. And that would be a code change or zoning change, uh, that would allow development for the same amount, uh, same amount of houses on a smaller acreage and still keep the farm and still have the farmer have the ability to create income uh, for the property without losing income. Because one of the things I saw upfront was how do we, uh, not reimburse, but how do we compensate farmers for the loss of revenue?
And, and it's two part because it's the, and this is part of the educational process. For my end, I being in that state of the work group, it's not just the development rights, it's your ongoing operational needs that are tied to the value of your land.
What are the losses value to you?
Your loss of value to your land. And like, how does that impact um, your, your business operations, especially if you're a commercial agriculture? On a larger scale.
So the clustering could act in that way where you, you have a certain number of acres and you could cluster a certain number of homes on that property.
I can see your wheels are turning. Well, as, so as it's currently written, just so it's clear, it's in agritourism overlay district. Oh yeah, here's the map. Um. And ju, you know, outside of the areas that would potentially be rezoned to long-term ag. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's hard to see up there, but about five thousand of the acres, like the, the pink boxes are actually included in one of the scenarios um, that you've already seen for long-term agriculture zoning, which really leaves, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, five thousand acres are included. So it really only leaves about fifteen hundred acres, um, that, you know, aren't part of any scenario, um, where this would be applied. Now, whether we look at the clustering requirements under long-term ag, that's, that's open for the planning commission discussion and looking at, you know, other how do other counties approach that? Um, and then also, there have been a lot of challenges, um, legal challenges as counties have tried to update different provisions. Um, and so we'd also want to dig into that to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up.
Challenges against clustering or?
Things like density bonuses and whatnot. So we just don't, we want to make sure that we're giving you the feedback you need to, you know, make a recommendation that isn't immediately going to be appealed.
So the road to clustering is not terribly difficult, but the road to density bonuses is probably a dead end.
I wouldn't see.
Yeah.
May I? I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's necessarily a dead end and, uh, that came up in our stakeholder group and it's something we'd like to consider a little bit more with the housing update as part of the comp plan, the periodic comp plan update, because the county has been challenged on that previously. And uh, the density bonuses were removed after that challenge. We, we need to spend more time on it than we have with this appeal right now, but it's still on the table. Um, we just need to be able to dedicate the appropriate time and do it right. So.
Go ahead. Just for reverence, I know Eastern Oregon does some of this clustering. And they require one well for the cluster. It's a community well. I have a cousin that's on that system and the community well is on his property. So, I mean, that's something to think about. When you talk about wells and, and, you know, removing water from, et cetera. And water rights issues for the farmers.
Commissioner Day, did you have something? Um, kind of, uh, what, what's the nature of the challenges to the density bonuses?
Um, that's my view. How?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said, Ashley, but I don't recall off the top of my head. I had to have to look back into that further. Um, I believe it came, it may have come out of the variety of rural densities case that the county was challenged on in the past. And that had a number of items, so I'd have to read back through that court case and uh, identify it specifically.
We have a pretty narrow scope here with what, with LTA right now and, and clustering could be part of that, but we're going to save density bonuses for a comp plan in the housing element. That kind of the plan?
That's an accurate statement, Chair.
Let's focus our issues that direction.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have a case citation.
Yeah. Um, Ashley, did you have more on this?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drink water in that Maya.
Maya, did you have more to present tonight?
Uh, we just have a couple last slides on next steps. So, um, we're in the May to July timeframe right now. We plan to be bringing this back to the Planning Commission over the next five to six meetings for your review. And then moving forward, August, bringing this to the Board of Accounting Commissioners, we hope to have another open house on a planning commission recommendation following the planning commission's review. And then the goal is to reach a final action by the Board of County Commissioners by the end of this year. And uh, that timeline is to be responsive to that appeal. So um, we are continually extending that appeal right now. And uh, that's kind of the expedited timeline to get this through this year. And so Planning Commission review schedule, this is just a tentative idea for how the Planning Commission could approach this review schedule. We have tonight's work session, May seventeenth, we'll be bringing this item back for additional discussion. Uh, Ashley and I will probably have a really short presentation on some of the follow-up items you've asked us tonight, and you'll hear from some of our stakeholder work group members. And we are asking that the Planning Commission consider requesting and scheduling a public hearing at that meeting for a date in June. Um, we've taken these scenarios out to the community. Folks are really excited to provide comment on what they've already seen. That does not lock the Planning Commission into the scenarios that are presented. Uh, we're really focusing on what the changes are to the designation criteria instead of what a map looks like. The maps are just illustrative to what those designation criteria changes could look like. And uh, if we do hold a public hearing in June, we're budgeting time to hold several follow-up work sessions, three follow-up work sessions after that public hearing to have more discussion on changes, um, additional needs or anything like that. So. Uh, questions, comments, and discussion. I'm gonna close out of the PowerPoint and we can have a conversation.
Anybody else have anything for this?
I guess one thing I should probably get out of the way.
Yes.
I currently own an interest in land that is long-term ag. I am, I can't tell on that map, but I am pretty positive that there is land that I have an interest in that is at least under one of those scenarios slated to go into long-term zoning. That being said, I have no intention of refusing myself unless the discussion comes down to a particular parcel that I have an interest in.
Fair. Does anybody else have anything?
Just to say that I'd be disappointed if Scott refused himself.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm just kind of curious, will some of the work sessions be held, like say in South County or where people can access them a little easier? Or will everything be here?
Work session, meaning planning commission work sessions?
Yeah, just, I mean, are we gonna get closer to the public? Or is everything gonna be done here?
Well, planning commission meetings, those will be held here. That's why we're, we're asking for a date out into the future for the, um. Sorry, guys.
You know, my birthday was the date cited up there. This would be an awesome birthday party.
Are you continuing with your public outreach right now?
Yeah, yes. And I mean, I, I'm going before the Olympia Master Builders, um, in a few weeks to really dive into like clustering requirements, um, if they're, if they've run into challenges, what their thoughts are. Um, so, yeah, I mean, yes, we are continuing to do outreach, um, and trying to gather feedback.
Anybody else have anything for this topic? All right, thanks, folks. Uh, this is a big one and I hope we can get through it quickly. All right, we're gonna move on on our agenda to good of the order. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Anything at all? All right, well, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
I had.